Twenty twenty four, Order Commissioners Regular Meeting. It is on, I think it's on, my light's on, alrighty, cool. Well, welcome everybody, hope you all had a great Memorial Day. Hope you all had a great Memorial Day, took a little bit of time to remember the fallen, and you can have an opportunity to do that again tonight if you wish. So, we'll raise for the present, uh, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll take a moment of silence to give thanks and praise. Thank you very much. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and look for a approval of tonight's agenda? Can I get anyone to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda?
All in favor. The ayes have it, the agenda is now approved. General Public Comments, looks like we had one person sign up for General Public Comments. We have a Joe down. You have three minutes.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, good evening Commissioners and Town Staff, my name is Joel, and I actually reside within the neighboring county, uh, neighboring area of Wesley Chapel. And I'm here tonight, as I often watch these meetings and other local government meetings, uh, but I'm here tonight to give you and the residents of Waxaw some words of wisdom from the Bible regarding some of the controversial issues that are on the agenda tonight and have been in over the past couple of weeks and months. Um, I hope these are, these are highly applicable, uh, and I hope you guys will remember these as you guys, as the Commissioners serve in your political offices, and outside of that, as citizens after you are done with your terms here, at some point. To the Commission, I first want to urge you to ask God for wisdom in the decisions that you make. Uh, James one five says that if any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God who gives generously without finding fault, and it will be given to you. Furthermore, Proverbs eighteen verse two says, some, uh, it says something that we deem, be deemed as offensive to some in today's day and age unfortunately. It says, "Fools find no pleasure in understanding, but delight in airing their own opinions." Therefore, I urge you to ask God for wisdom in all the decisions that you make, and follow His leading. To both the residents of Waxaw and to the Commissioners, I want to remind you all that no matter what decisions are made at the local, national, or international level, God is always in control, and His plan will prevail. As it says in Proverbs nineteen verse twenty-one, "Many are the plans of a person's heart, but it is the Lord's purpose that prevails." To the residents, I also want to remind you that God establishes leaders into authority. As Apostle Paul told us in Romans thirteen verse one, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority which, except that which God has established." The authorities that exist have been established by God, unquote. Although you have, although you may not like many people on this Commission, or who is in the White House, or who is in Congress, God has put them there for a reason. Finally, Paul tells us in his first letter to Timothy, to pray for our governmental leaders, which is what we should be doing at the local level, all the way up to the federal level. He says in First Timothy to, I urge you first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peaceably and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. This is good and pleasing to our Savior, who wants people to be saved and come to a knowledge and truth in Him. I hope you all will heed these words from the Lord tonight, and not only for tonight, but for your entire lives, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to hope for the future. And a child shall lead them. Uh, let's see, that concludes tonight's public comments. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
All in favor.
Aye.
The consent agenda is so adopted. Next up, we have recognitions, I believe we have a Miss Melody.
Hello, so tonight I have the pleasure of introducing Will Crampton. He is the admin intern for the summer, uh, for, uh, our department, and so he will be working on several big projects, uh, we're definitely challenging him. So, he will be working on preparing the application for the Great Trails State Program Grant, as well as putting together the, um, maintenance plan for the buildings for our facilities. And so, um, Will is ser-, hold on, uh, so he is currently a student in the App State Program for, um, the Masters in Administration. And so he will be finishing up that program in about a year, and he's still identifying which area of local government he wants to go into. Uh, I would say that local government is in his blood because his grandfather is a retired planner from the city of Charlotte. Um, and so, his family also lives in Matthews, and, uh, so we are just very excited to have him on board, and I know that going through that program, he will knock our socks off. So, welcome, Will.
Welcome, welcome.
Yeah, I just, uh, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. You know, I've only been here a couple of weeks, but I feel like I'm already getting to know the town of Waxaw very well, and I'm just really excited to keep working here and help out how I can, get to know everybody, so, thank you.
And good luck with that grant application. Next up, we have Miss Wendy. We have a five-year service award.
Good evening. I am here to recognize Emily Lerner, our HR Manager, for her five years of service. Emily has been here since, uh, May of two thousand and nineteen. She emailed me looking for an internship opportunity, and it took us a while to connect because I was one person, and I was, kept missing stuff, missing meetings. Uh, we finally did, we brought her on, and she, the rest is history. She has a, um, Masters of Science in Leadership and a minor in HR, and she, staff really appreciates her, she's well-liked. If somebody wasn't well-liked, I wouldn't say that either, but she is well-liked. Um, and obviously, I could say we often have conversations about how Waxaw, uh, leads in many ways, many positive ways, and, uh, uh, rest, you should rest assured that you were in good hands with Emily as we move forward, because she'll be a great part of that leadership. There you go. You're welcome.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, and the five years have flown by, I can't, I, it's, it's crazy that it's already been five years, so, uh, here's to another five years, and hopefully many more from there, so, thanks again for the opportunity.
Congratulations.
Yeah, and it's been great working under Wendy, um, I've learned so much, um, and so I can't thank her enough either, so, yeah, thank you.
The check is in the mail. Great, we have no presentations this evenings, so, at this point, I'd like to get a motion to open a public hearing regarding the fiscal budget. Can I get a motion to up, open this public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing?
All in favor. This public hearing is now open.
Alright, thank you Mayor, good evening everybody, I'll wait for IT to pull up the presentation momentarily, but, as always, thank you for the, uh, the privilege of presenting the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-two-five budgets. Uh, we are nearing the, uh, the home stretch of our annual process. Uh, it's typically a six-month, uh, process, and tonight is the required public hearing is required by state statute. Of course, we've already had the initial presentation of it to the Board at your Budget Workshop, but this will be the first time that we've introduced it fully to the public, so I'll go over it at a very high level, uh, based on the, uh, the other agenda items tonight. Wanted to make sure that we had plenty of time for, uh, for that, and of course Melody will be, uh, pitching into the presentation as well. So, moving forward, maybe, yes, okay, possibly, not yet. Very good. No? It was on. Well. Ah, we'll try this way, this way works. Alright, so we will ad lib a little bit, and use the keyboard instead. So, the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll have, uh, three budgets as you normally do, uh, there's the operating budget and the capital improvement budget. General Fund and Special Revenue Fund are within the operating budget, and then the capital improvement budget stands on its own. Your overall operating budget is proposed at twenty-one million, six hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. That includes your general fund at twenty-one million, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. The special revenue fund is one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and we'll go over, uh, in a little bit later, the specifics of the special revenue fund. Your capital improvement budget is four million, five hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. The big picture, as I always go over, we're continuing the five-year capital improvement plan. The tax rate is maintained at thirty-eight and a half cents. It's been that way now for the sixth consecutive year. And also, a penny on the tax rate, just for those of you that are always interested in that, is approximately three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and how you figure that is you, uh, utilize the, uh, the revenue streams that are based on what that, uh, what the tax, the, the tax rate is from the county, real property, prior years, and motor vehicle taxes, and that constitutes between a half to two-thirds of the total revenue that we receive. So, some updates from our Budget Workshop, we had our Budget Workshop back on Monday, April twenty-ninth, so that was, uh, roughly a month ago, and so what we did, based on the feedback from the Board, is we added the North Point SRO position, and, uh, the high-level description of that is a partnership between, uh, North Point Christian Academy and the town of Waxaw. That position would be responsible for a school resource officer duties for thirty-five weeks of the year, and then the remaining seventeen weeks would be responsible for community police duties, uh, serving, uh, the citizens of Waxaw in that, in that capacity. The communications budget, we adjusted the start to that position from January to April, so moved it to the final quarter of fiscal year twenty-five. We also moved, uh, them back to the admin budget from their own standalone budget, and that created, along with some adjustments to Haven Creative's contract and overall savings in the budget year upcoming of thirty-one thousand dollars. We're also notified, uh, by Haven Creative that they intend this to be their final year of the, um, of their service to the town, so hence one of the reasons why we need to go ahead and move with that, uh, transition, moving forward to, uh, to in-house. The Rotary Club request, I talked to the Rotary Club, uh, President after the, uh, the budget, uh, budget, uh, workshop, and, uh, talked about, uh, their, uh, material costs, or what that request was for, flags, flagpoles, uh, things of that nature. Uh, they said they would provide a letter expressing that as such, I've yet to receive that letter to this point. Uh, however, uh, based in thinking about a war, fifteen hundred dollars is really not a major consequence to our budget, so I don't think that that has to necessarily be tied to this budget document, I think that can be worked out at a separate time, and we can certainly absorb that into some line item, so I don't think that's necessary to be resolved as part of this, part of this process. Couple other additions that we did is we added some, uh, graphics to our, uh, budget, and I think that greatly enhanced the budget as well. Uh, you'll find there, uh, in the early part of the budget, uh, section of budget at a glance, and that tells a, uh, story, if you didn't look at anything else in the budget except that one page, that would give you an overall story of how, uh, the budget has changed over the last three years. Uh, and it includes all of our, uh, all of our operating, uh, budgets from fiscal year twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-four, and then the proposed fiscal year twenty-five, as well as the capital budget, all in that one, uh, one page, and so we think that's a nice addition. We also added percentages increases and decreases to the budget message for all of the departmental, uh, as well as, for all the departments, and as well as the, uh, other funds and the special funds. And so that, that tells a story about how those, uh, how those budgets have changed from year to year as well. So, those were the, uh, the changes that we, uh, updated to the budget workshop document that covers it all, and with that, I will, uh, bring Melody up to talk about the operating budget.
Thanks Jeff, um, so when we prepared this year's budget, we were conservative about what and how we budgeted. So, the general fund revenues that are estimated are twenty-one million, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. And so, the largest revenue that we receive is the real and personal property tax at eleven million, four hundred seventy thousand dollars. And so, uh, this tax is received primarily between the fall and winter months, uh, and we are estimating a ninety-nine percent tax collection on that revenue. The prior year's taxes and penalties is estimated to be twenty thousand, that's your, uh, prior year's taxes that haven't been paid. Uh, and then motor vehicle tax, we're estimating one million, two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. And so that's the annual plate renewals that are collected by the DMV, so we're estimating a ninety-nine percent collection rate, and, um, that is also received on a monthly basis. Now, it's important that it's not confused with the municipal motor vehicle tax for Waxaw of twenty-five dollars, that's the small transportation plan, um, contribution or tax. Um, so with sales and use tax, whenever you make a, a purchase in Waxaw, that sales tax goes to the state, and then we get a small portion of that back. And so, right now, we are tracking over five point four million dollars received this fiscal year, and we are budgeting for five million, three hundred fifty thousand dollars for next year. The franchise tax is received on a quarterly basis, it depends on weather and utility costs, and so, we are estimating receiving one million dollars, and for this fiscal year, we are currently tracking over one million dollars. So, other revenues are, uh, the total amount is one million, four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, that includes the contributions that we receive from the ABC Store for alcohol sales, uh, beer and wine, and then we also have planning, engineering, and parts and rec fees, as well as building inspections, and interest earned. So, with interest earned, we are conservatively budgeting six hundred thousand. We are currently tracking one million dollars this fiscal year, and so we're projecting to collect one point three million dollars by the end of this fiscal year. Um, for the transfer from fund balance, uh, for building inspections, that's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, that is basically to keep that function oper- operational, or to balance that budget. So, we are expecting in January twenty to twenty-five to, uh, for the regular inspections to, uh, start increasing with some of the new developments coming online. Some of these developments are the Preserve, Old Town Village, and Blythe Milltown Homes. The transfer from general fund of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred is the, um, to purchase vehicles and equipment for capital. Um, and so that's just in case we don't receive the revenues that we're projecting. Um, there's a chance we may not have to make that transfer, because currently in this fiscal year, we're tracking over twenty-one million dollars. So, moving on to highlights of the budget, so, within this budget, uh, we have the Waste Pro Contract. This is, um, we're on a two-year, we're on the second year of a five-year contract for trash recycling and yard waste pickup. And so, then with the Police Department Building, that was refinanced three years ago. We saved a hundred and twelve thousand dollars on the, over the life of the loan. Uh, that is going to be paid off in twenty twenty-eight. Um, so mo-, with moving to Town Campus in, uh, a couple of months, we'll be sunsetting the Town Hall lease, uh, so we budgeted three months in the admin budget for that purpose, uh, and so in July, we'll be moving to a month-to-month payment for that building until we move out. And so then, the Town Campus debt payment is also included under the admin budget. We pay one point seven million dollars on an annual basis to pay that debt. Uh, and then, within this budget, we'll be establishing a facilities maintenance team that will do all the maintenance for the major facilities for the town. So, uh, the Police Department, Town Hall, and new PSPR building, um, and then from there, we'll see how it grows. Um, the salary study, uh, you all had adopted earlier this year, and so those numbers are included within this budget. It was basically, there were some employees whose salaries needed to be brought up to market rate, and so, uh, that's included within this budget. And so, leadership has committed to performing a salary study, um, uh, every other year, just to keep everything up to market rate. Uh, so, the facade improvement program will remain the same as last year at sixty-five thousand dollars, and we will continue with a full event schedule. So, next up, we have personnel expense. Uh, so typically with, uh, local government, you see personnel expenses at fifty percent of the cost for overall operational costs. This year, it's fifty-two percent for Waxaw, in prior years, it's come in around fifty thou-, uh, fifty percent. Um, and so within this budget, we're funding total positions of one hundred and twelve, with twelve of those being new, and two, uh, out of those new positions, it's two part-time community police officers, one full-time SRO community police officer, two part-time customer service, one part-time rec tech, two full-time facility maintenance, and one of those positions is budgeted for a half-year, two full-time public services, one full-time communications, that one is budgeted for a quarter of the year, and then one full-time engineering position. So, out of these positions, there are five part-time and seven full-time. And so, every employee will receive cost of living of three point two percent. So, uh, the exception here is if an employee receives an adjustment through the salary study, that they will not receive the cost of living, um, directly through the budget. The cost of living was automatically included in the salary study if they received the adjustment. So, all employees will be eligible for a merit increase, uh, and so that's up to three percent at the discretion of the department head. Some other benefits that the town provides are longevity pay, life insurance. medical insurance and retirement costs. So this is a high-level overview of the department expenses. It basically shows the percentage of what each of the department budgets make up of the overall budget. And so it's typical that you see your forward-facing departments make up a larger portion of that budget. So police, parks and rec, public services. And then you notice that we've got the admin department on there as well, that budget. So that includes the town campus debt payment of one point seven million dollars. And so the amount proposed for contingency is two hundred thousand dollars. This follows the town's policy to reserve one percent of expected revenues for unexpected expenses. And the transfers that are included within this budget are the second year contribution to the pedestrian connectivity fund of a hundred thousand dollars. And then we will continue to make contributions to the capital reserve of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And then building inspections is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's to balance that budget and to keep it operational until things pick back up. So the fund balance, the amount of unassigned fund balance from the last audit was twenty point seven million dollars. This equates to ninety-six percent of the proposed FY twenty-five operating budget. And so I will note this is well above the town's committed policy of thirty percent. So the trans, there will also be a transfer from fund balance of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred. This is for capital equipment and vehicles. So at this time, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Jeff.
Thank you, Melody. So next, special revenue funds. And so these are funds that need to be separated from our, from the general fund portion of the operating budget. They are specific to that function that they are, are there to serve. In this case, this year, we have four different funds. Three of them are police-related. The police explorers program, which I think most everybody is very familiar with and that proposed budget is five thousand dollars. There are two funds that we have where we receive a small portion of money back from drug seizures and, and other seizures of such. The police state drug is six thousand dollars. And you'll notice the police federal drug is, is a little bit more sizable. We do, we did receive a, a nice receipt of payment from, from the state or from, in this case, from the federal government for some seizures. And so we're utilizing that in this year's budget to acquire a police vehicle. And then back up there at the top is the cemetery fund. So this is the budget for the operations of our cemetery that is on the south side of town. And up until this point, folks that are interested in, in making this spot their final resting place would be able to purchase plots there. But we are proposing the opportunity to, to offer niches. In this case, we're calling it our columbarium project. And if this proves to be successful, we have room to add more. But the first one would be able to house a total of forty-eight niches and that proposed project is forty thousand dollars. And so you'd add that to the typical operating costs of the cemetery on an annual basis and that's the proposal for sixty-seven thousand dollars this year. Then we have our capital improvement plan. And so now we are a hundred projects long on our master list. And I'll proudly say that in the three years existence of the program, we have completed twenty-eight of them. So that is a major accomplishment and we should all be very proud of that. So most capital improvement plans, they vary from four to ten years for their planning. Many of them utilize a five-year plan and that's what we do here in Waxaw. And of course, we re-adopt that every year because things do change and things can change significantly from year to year. Some projects can be pretty far back in the priority and they can move up in priority or vice versa. And that's why we revisit this on an annual basis. But what the CIP does is it identifies large-scale projects and equipment purchases and provides a plan for affording to pay for, for these big-time projects, big-time equipment in a manageable fashion. So this year's budget, as I mentioned before, is four million five hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred dollars. And just as another side note, within our total capital reserve, you have seven point three million dollars. And so the projects this year, the first project is Kensington Drive NC sixteen. So you all are very familiar with this project and we are hopeful that this will make it to construction this year. We are at the last legs of hopefully private property negotiation for right-of-way. And once we get past that, we can move it to construction. So this is the project that will add additional turn lane storage to the intersection of Kensington Drive and sixteen and will also improve the sidewalk network there, as well as take out that, those areas that were originally designed for parking spaces but have been cross-hatched off in recent times to accommodate for the traffic volume that drives through there. You have the contribution to the pedestrian connectivity fund that Melody mentioned for one hundred thousand dollars. So that'll be added to that fund that can be utilized for greenways and sidewalks in the future. Can be used for construction, restoration or local match opportunities. And we have formed a recreation center fund in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And so that will be the fund that utilizes the state appropriation money that we received from the state in the last budget session that will pay for the, the rec center, the, the acquisition costs, as well as the, the startup costs. We received two point seven million dollars from the state. And so of course, we've already started up operations at the facility and now we're just paying the, the monthly to the owner through a financing. We utilize that method to continue to take advantage of the interest rates that we're receiving. And so that has helped with our revenue streams and we will make these payments monthly out of this fund. Powellville projects, if you remember from your retreats, the board gave the directive to maintain our, our streets to the level of five hundred thousand dollars per year. We discovered that very, very proudly that our streets were in very good condition and the board wanted to make sure that they stayed that way. So we made that financial commitment moving forward to try to keep up with the maintenance on the streets at a sizable, a sizable amount. And so that's included in the Powellville budget, as well as this will be year two of our tree maintenance program. Millbridge got extensive trimming, I guess you could say, in year one. And so they'll be moving on to their next zone in year two and utilize monies from the Powellville budget to do that. Small transportation plan projects, so these are the projects that come specifically out of the funding that Melody mentioned. It's the twenty-five dollar fee when you renew your registration annually. So the two projects that we have proposed this year are traffic signal projects. These two projects received warrants from the NC DOT to install traffic signals. But those would have to be done on the town's dime, which we are willing to do. And so with any process with the DOT, it's got a little bit of time to it. And so the likelihood of us actually getting to construction in this next budget year is, is possible, but still probably pretty small. So we are budgeting for the design and right-of-way acquisition in this upcoming fiscal year, both with the proposed amount of fifty thousand dollars, which should cover both of those. And then the remaining estimated revenue that we received this year would be just kept and utilized towards the next budget year to pay for the construction of both of those traffic signals. But if, if we're lucky and that process moves quicker, then we'll come back before you and, and hopefully make that move to, to make that move along quicker. But this is the anticipated schedule that we have from DOT for moving forward these proj, with those projects at this time. Safety action plan grant funds, a hundred and sixty thousand, so that's the SS four A. So that's a program that's designed to improve road race safety. So that will create a plan that will support future funding opportunities. It's something that the federal government does, is usually have to create a plan, work through that and then you can, from that plan, then you're able to apply for other grants. Bulletproof vest fund at twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars. So that reimburses a portion of costs for body armor vests purchased for law enforcement. And then the capital vehicles, that's four hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. And that's new vehicles for our police department, as well as public services and fleet maintenance or facilities maintenance, excuse me. Capital equipment, a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So that'll cover some projects at Nesbit Park, such as adding some additional liner to the fencing, adding some additional screening to the, to the foul ball nets, those, those type of projects. Handheld radios, we need to bring ourselves out of the stone age with some of our radios that we have and we can acquire twenty new ones. And I think this became very, very evident to us during our exercise that we had just a couple of Fridays ago for our emergency management, that would be a, a well-received purchase for us moving forward. Couple of additional projects we have is the, the library. Of course, you know now is relocated up to Cuthbertson Drive and they will be fully out of our existing facility at the end of June. And so in its place, we are proposing to start a Waxaw learning center. So that will be a, a programming center. People can utilize that for meeting space. Parks and rec will have some programming in there as well. But most importantly, it'll maintain a space for people to be able to just come in, plug in a laptop or utilize a town computer if they need access to the internet or just need access to any word processing or spreadsheet type needs for whatever work they may need to, to accomplish. We have a downtown master plan that is proposed in this budget as well. So setting the vision for the future of downtown planning efforts. And then we had our fee schedule updates this year. I mentioned it's a cemetery and adding the columbarium there, we needed to add costs for purchasing a niche within the columbarium. Parks and rec has proposed fee changes that we went over at the budget workshop, as well as the planning. And then we also had a additional fee for footer, footer failure. And I won't go over these again, but I, I did go over these at the budget workshop and it, it takes a true village to put together this, this budget document. And I can't tell you how proud I am of, of everybody. You have a staff here that's second to none, that comes to the table, collaborates, works, advocates for themselves, is accepting when they hear some news that they might not want to hear sometimes from me. We work through it, we work through it together. And I really appreciate the direction, direction of the board and the, the leadership and just really proud to be a part of the process annually. It's, it's kind of, it, it's, it's a happy process to be done with, but then it's also sad too because it's, it's really one of my favorite things to do, believe it or not, so. But when decision day comes, so we'll be asking for three motions from the board. The first would be to adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget, as well as the ordinance number, adopt the twenty twenty-five through twenty-nine capital improvement plan, and then the twenty-four, twenty-five CIP budget and ordinance. It's always a privilege to discuss the budget, introduce that to the public. So I'm certainly be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Uh, this is a public hearing, so public comments were invited. Nobody has signed up, so if anyone came in late, going once, going twice, going three times. So can I get a motion to close public comment? Co, yeah, sorry, close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
This public hearing is now closed. Thank you, Jeff. And we're off to old business. Ms. Janet?
Good evening. I am Janet Pirano. I'm a planner here for, in the town of Waxaw. And I also serve as a staff liaison to our Historic Preservation Commission. This evening, I am here to talk about modifications to our facade improvement grant program. We discussed this back in April and it was tabled until this evening. Keyboard. No, I put it away. I didn't realize you were using that. I thought they fixed the clicker for you. So I will go through this quickly. It is a request from the planning staff and the business development director to make some modifications to our facade improvement program. We'd like to include roof repairs as eligible for funding. So each year, money is budgeted for facade grants and we haven't ever reached the point where we've exhausted the funds. We have received facade grant inquiries in the past that included roofs, but had to deny those requests because under existing grant guidelines, roofs are not eligible. And we know that the maintenance of a watertight roof is the single most important determinant of building health over the long term. Right now, over the past two months or so, I've received three inquiries about roofs, the Indigo Pearl Building, the Tac Exchange Building and the Blood Law Building. So we know there's an immediate need. We can be more responsive to the needs of the community and restructure the grant program to include roofs. We have some funds available and we know that the roof is the most important part of the building. The Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the proposed changes to the facade improvement grant program in April and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation. This evening, I would request a motion to approve the proposed modifications and I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Discussion? Seems like we're ready for a vote.
I just, did you have something? Oh, um, I, I support the roofs for the commercial buildings. I did speak with Terry Saddle and then requesting that the HPC consider adding some language about the residential buildings. I feel like if the, if the house has been maintained as a historic building, then roofs should be allowed in it. But if a resident is just kind of picking and choosing what they're wanting to be historic, that the roofs should not be part of, of that. So I don't know if they can do something like that.
I can present that to the HPC. So then, would you consider that for any facade grant request from a residence?
Well, what I'm saying is, so I know there's historic homes downtown that they've, they've chosen not to maintain some of the historic features such as siding. Like they've chosen to do vinyl siding as opposed to maintaining the wood siding. And so at that point, the roof is not really protecting the historic nature of the house. So that's, I just would like to see some type of stipulation as far as that goes.
So since they've gone to vinyl siding, they've already kind of broken the historic nature?
Adjusted the historic nature of it, yes.
You mentioned about the, previously getting requests for roofs. Didn't think about that because you just mentioned it. Hate to put you on the spot, but do you have a ballpark idea of, you know, how many of those were received?
Off the top of my head, I can think of three over the past two and a half years that I've been here. Not, not the three that I discussed in the presentation, three residences.
Yeah, if we were to approve this though, I would expect that to probably go up quite a lot. I'm, you know, just concerned about expanding this to roofs because I know it's an expensive thing. I'm just concerned about expanding this to roofs because I know it's an expensive thing to replace, and sixty-five thousand won't go very far towards that if a lot of people put requests in. It's the kind of thing that, you know, there could be pressure in the future to make this grant even bigger, and then, you know, snowball from there. Also, you know, the map of the area that is eligible for the grant is fairly large, and it includes some very recently built houses that, you know, could potentially be putting in a request. They're not particularly historic, but they could be putting in a request for the grant, which, you know, if they were to get that money, that's not really what it's intended for.
Right, and our facade grant allows for anything within that boundary that is over fifty years old, so any recently built structure wouldn't qualify.
So anything within fifty years, siding has been around in the last fifty years, correct?
Yes.
So that wouldn't really disqualify anybody, then, would it? If they changed their, or if they improved their home siding?
Well, if you're talking about vinyl siding being an improvement on a historic building...
No, I'm not.
I would disagree.
No, I disagree, too. I'm just saying, we have to be very specific on what we're saying.
Yes.
And I don't think sixty-five thousand dollars is going to be enough for roofs. And then at what point are we going to be looking at foundations? And then you're talking about a ton of money, because I know a lot of the homes, a lot of the buildings probably need that. And so while I want to support that, I think the facade grant is generous, and these business owners that own these buildings are getting rent for many, many years, and it is a cost of doing business to keep up your business. I have to keep up my roof, or I can't live in my home. So, and I'm not getting income from that, so I just feel like the taxpayers are not going to want to increase that.
So there have been studies done about the impact on facade grant programs, and one of that is an economic impact, that facade improvements include strengthening locally-owned businesses, which help keep dollars in the local economy. Revitalizing downtown areas through facade improvements can attract businesses, investors, and tourists. When buildings have appealing facades, it can increase traffic, stimulate economic activity, and boost property values, and this in turn can lead to job creation, increased tax revenue, and a thriving local economy.
I think the intention of this kind of program is good, and it is generally a good thing, because that's what makes Waxall Waxall, right? It's these beautiful historic buildings.
Yes.
We want to make sure they look good, so that when people come here, they enjoy their experience. But when it goes beyond historic and visible things, you know, I feel like that should be more on the building owner, you know, keeping up your roof. I mean, these, you know, the Tac Exchange is an obvious exception to this, but a lot of the larger buildings downtown, the roof isn't really visible, and of course, it's important for keeping the roof up so that the rest of it doesn't fall to pieces, but yeah, it's a fine line here.
Right, and I understand that the roof isn't always a visible part of the building. However, it is the most important part of the building and keeping that building structure safe. It, once, once your roof starts leaking, that water just gets into the building, and it can destroy walls, floors, ceilings. It's the most important protectant of that building.
So when, when somebody applies for the facade grant, the HPC votes on it themselves, and so if we all of a sudden have a whole influx of people asking for new roofs, then the HPC doesn't have to approve every single one of them, right?
No, no, they don't have to.
Yeah, they can pick and choose what they feel fits, like which...
Yes.
Building deserves it more or something, right?
Yes, and when the facade grant program first started, there used to be a checklist to evaluate, there was a list of criteria to evaluate which projects would receive the funding. We don't get a huge influx now, so one or two, actually tonight, we have two. That's the most I've ever presented at one meeting. So if we saw an increase in applications, we can go back to that program that we had in place before, and where we set a date, maybe twice a year or quarterly, these are when these applications are due, and, you know, go through a criteria list and determine which ones would receive funding.
Okay, so they can, they can decide what, which ones should be prioritized with the money?
Yes, and we would do that based on our guidelines.
Right, okay.
And a big part of this, and just a couple points to make on this, is, first of all, this is a byproduct of having a historic downtown, having a historic district that we care about and we want to preserve. So it kind of falls in the town's lap to say, hey, if you're really serious about preserving it, put your money where your mouth is. So there's that. Secondly, and I think the most important part about this, is the fact that the board has complete control. We've set a limit of sixty-five currently, and the board, if it even gets close to that, can say, well, we're not going to do this project because we're going to be over our limit, or whatever it may be. So I think the advantage of the program is because every application goes before the board. And I think that complete and total control of the board allows the board to then decide which programs we're going to invest in, or maybe make that determination, okay, this seems a little too residential, you've already deviated, so the board can make that call on a case-by-case basis. And I think that's what gives the program its strength, is the fact that it stays a board decision. I'm a client on this.
But with that, I think there has to be criteria, otherwise it's arbitrary.
I agree completely, and it sounds like there is.
There is criteria. We have, we have design standards.
You had a checklist, and now because you don't get too many, I think we have to go with the checklist every time, otherwise you will have people saying, well, this one didn't need a checklist, and now I need a checklist. I think we need to have the criteria and check it off each time.
So we...
The minimum.
We do have a criteria. We present that to the HPC. The HPC has their design standards, which are based on the Department of Interior historic standards. So we do go through them. What we don't do is have more than one project at a time that we're trying to determine which one is more deserving. So if we saw an increase in the number of applications, we would need to go back to that to make a determination on which one's the best eligible.
So it's still kind of a maneuverable program. The checklist itself is a maneuverable checklist that can be changed and altered as needed.
So...
So in other words, if we're finding we're getting a lot of applications that we can't possibly fund, then we can look at the checklist again and say, okay, maybe we need to alter this criteria.
Right, we can make the criteria stricter if we need it to.
But the idea being that we have a checklist, so it's not arbitrary and capricious, so we have.
And if you want to stick at the sixty-five thousand dollar budget, you do not have to approve another one that comes along. That's completely at the board's discretion, and I would also say that if you, if you have some concern about some of the residential criteria, if you move forward, you can always direct the HPC to work on that and bring that back to the board as well.
Exactly. Are we ready to vote on this, then?
I make a motion to approve the proposed modifications to the facade improvement grant program as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes appear to have it, three to two.
Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Lisa. We have a conditional rezoning for the DeWitt property.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant has requested to table this item for more time to consider the items that were brought up at the last meeting. They are asking to table this to June eleventh. The decision is up to you all whether to do so.
I'll make a motion to table the... The DeWitt property, CD zero zero four two zero two four, to June eleventh.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes would have it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Madison. Conditional zoning regarding the Emerson Park property.
My presentation won't be as short as Lisa's. Come on. I am before you tonight again to present conditional rezoning request for Emerson Park. I will be brief in portions of my presentation, as you guys heard the majority of this during the public hearing portion. So this petition is a request by Jones Homes for a conditional rezoning request for four properties, roughly one hundred and eleven acres in size, located north of the existing Waxall Animal Hospital, and then south of the Waxall Police Office. The property is currently farmland and zone TC and R4, located on North Broom Street and then Waxall Marvin Road. I would say you'll see a few changes in the numbers on this slide, but I will cover that in more detail at a later slide. Along the frontage, in purple, well, even the pointer doesn't work. So in purple, you can see the commercial area. Behind that, you can see the portion of multifamily, and then to the south is the single-family detached and attached products. So a TIA or Traffic Impact Analysis was required for this project. We had our third-party consultant, Kimley Horn, conduct this study, and nineteen intersections were identified for mitigation, and that's including internal and external to the site. Brady Finkley is here to answer any questions if they arise regarding the traffic impact analysis. So for open space, when we look at the Land Development Code, we plan around rec space and open space to better the development, so they are required to provide fifteen point seven one acres of open space, but they are providing twenty-six point one four acres of that open space. According to our pedestrian plan, they are required to build what we call Sunny's Way, so they're building point six miles of this greenway. It's a ten-foot greenway, and then in other portions, it's a ten-foot multi-use path. They are also building and connecting to a ten-foot asphalt greenway to the villages of Waxall Project, and then have other crush-and-run trails on the interior of the site that will be maintained by the Age Away. So in addition to the open space, we require a park land fee in lieu or dedication, so that's one thirty-fifth of an acre they are required to dedicate that park land or give a fee in lieu for. So based on three hundred and twenty-three residential units for single-family detached and attached, they are required to provide over nine acres of rec space. They have decided to dedicate four point six acres, and then we'll do a fee in lieu for the remainder of that. So to highlight here the tree preservation, they are required to preserve twenty-two acres of tree safe area. They are proposing eleven acres with the additional eleven acres to be planted in mitigation. This is one of your conditions to be considered tonight in your decision. So here are the conceptual elevations as a part of the vision book. They are also required to meet our Chapter Six Design Standards of the Land Development Code. So these are your single-family units, and your multifamily, and then snapshots of the retail and commercial. So what I will focus on is the Future Land Use Plan. So with this being submitted in mid-2023, they are going to be following our Waxall 2016 comp plan and our 2021 land use map. And so in the 2016 plan, they designate this as the G3 Intended Growth Sector, and it designates it in brown as mixed use and in the orange as residential. The mixed use designation is provided for a mixture of commercial and residential areas along major transportation routes, or located in a central location to act as a neighborhood center. Allowed uses include a wide range of retail and general service uses, and a mixture of housing types, including apartments, townhomes, and small lot, single-family. The residential designation provides a mixture of housing types in a walkable neighborhood setting. These uses include detached single-family, cottage housing, townhomes, and apartments, and then these are seen at a permitted density of four to eight dwelling units per acre. And then for the 2021 land use map, you can see the downtown designation in blue and the medium-density residential in yellow. The downtown is an area of town where a mix of retail, office-like manufacturing, and limited residential can be established. The medium-density residential designation provides a density that is consistent with that, the existing suburban-style neighborhoods in town, and that is a permitted density of three to five units per acre. So at the April Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board gave a unanimous unfavorable recommendation to you guys tonight, and when they presented and made a motion on their consistency statement, they stated that it is not consistent with the 2021 land use plan. So this outlines the current process. They are going through the conditional rezoning phase, and upon rezoning approval, we'll then submit engineered plans, which we disseminate to internal staff, our TRC, which includes a number of outside agencies, and then beyond that, upon approval, we'll go through our final plat process. So the updates, the applicant has agreed to reduce the multifamily units from four twenty to three eighty-four. That's a reduction of one apartment building, so the total unit count is down to seven twenty-three. So with this reduction in multifamily, the applicant is adding twenty thousand square feet of office-commercial space. And then the applicant has also agreed to two additional conditions. Condition number five, a tenant space shall not exceed twenty thousand square feet. And then six, multifamily unit count shall not exceed three hundred and eighty-four units. So these are your potential motions, and then those new conditions are added there in red. And then along with a motion for approval, there is your consistency statement. As always, I am here to answer any questions.
Can you go back a couple slides? I'd like to get some clarification on the twenty thousand square feet.
Yes, so to prevent, just to further prevent any big-box uses or large tenant spaces, they have agreed...
So you're talking retail? Commercial tenants?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yep. Great question. And the applicant is with us tonight as well to answer any additional questions.
Questions from the board?
So I had an additional condition request in lieu of the office building that will be replacing the one apartment building. Could that be open space instead?
Open space? Yeah, I'll have, if the applicant wants to come up and answer that.
You're right. So in other, right now, we're eliminating one of the buildings, and we have proposed to make an office building. He wants to make it open space, so am I asking?
Oh, yes.
I'd much rather do that.
Okay.
So I don't have any problem with that at all.
Okay.
Perfect, so instead, the commercial square footage was up to one hundred and forty-one thousand square feet. That will just go back down to one hundred and twenty-one thousand square feet, and in lieu of the apartment building, they'll do additional open space.
One other question. So we know that the R4 section, they can do by right in that, and we know with the total dwelling... And we know what the total dwelling units that could go in there by right is, is how much do we have?
Yes, so for R4 with the cluster provision, they could do up to five units per acre. Um, the by right plan would be similar to what is, is shown now, uh, as far as the R4 because that section doesn't change a whole lot. What you would see is probably the change in the TC zoned area, um, where they would do something different to make it a by rock, by right product.
So by taking the one apartment building out, does that now lower the residential units from what it would be by right?
As what I've seen, it would, yeah. So I've, I've seen, uh, or, uh, heard of a, a by right plan that had upwards of eight hundred and fifty units. Mark was able to present at the last, uh, the public hearing and their unit count was at seven hundred and sixty-seven. Uh, so this will be at seven hundred and twenty-three.
Because the R4 is eighty acres roughly. So that's three hundred and twenty homes for just the R4. And then, so the other hundreds of homes comes out of the apartment. How do you limit the number of apartments?
Well, they, they're taking out one.
But no, the, the, the eight fifty by right is, is a question mark as well because there's no clarity on what that really looks like. We did talk about whether or not it satisfies and meets the LDC and it sounds like it does to the strictest letter of the law, but it just, it just seems like the gift was given when the land was given R4. It seems like to give them more TC, it opens it up to potentially more apartments and it's just going to be more.
Which is why you're putting the conditions here now. Otherwise, without what is here and the plan that is now in place, it can open it up to something totally di- different and more.
Well, there's also no guarantee the commercial will come, correct? Because once it's rezoned, it's based on market conditions. And, you know, in our discussions, we talked about maybe eight years down the line.
Yeah.
To start.
The commercial is, is tied to the Providence Road widening project as part of that phase three. So you're correct. In that, then it could be eight to ten years before you see the commercial.
And the traffic mitigations would have to come by right as well, correct?
Correct, yeah. So even in a by right scenario, the TIA would still apply and they would have to follow those mitigations.
And as it stands now, the TIA would be done in phases anyway, correct? So.
Correct.
The, some of the impacts will only be taken care of when the commercial comes. Am I right in that line of things?
Correct. And if for a by right plan, they likely phase it as well, just as far as the outlining the traffic improvements, uh, which side of the site they start on first. And it just makes sense probably for marketing and selling homes.
Well, I've given it a lot of thought and I just, um, have some points I just wanted to, to make before the vote. You know, we often discuss the desire for more housing options in Waxaw, but it's important to keep in mind that we don't represent potential future residents who may reside in these dwellings, but rather we represent current Waxaw citizens. And what we know is that we gain nothing by approving this conditional rezoning request other than more traffic in an already over congested part of town. Yes, the property can be developed by right. And if the developer could build it by right at a profit, they could have done that. Twenty-four point eight one dwelling units per acre on sixteen point nine three acres or anything remotely close to that is outrageous. Waxaw citizens do not want two thousand more vehicles pouring out to NC sixteen at this location. Waxaw citizens do not want their children in overcrowded classrooms these projects will cause in the near term. Waxaw citizens are concerned about first responders not being able to reach them in the event of an emergency due to the current traffic conditions and inefficiency of the infrastructure. I have serious safety concerns. Waxaw citizens want to commute to and from work in a reasonable amount of time. Waxaw citizens want more of a commercial tax base and this project does not guarantee there will be a commercial development. The developer can simply choose not to develop the commercial portion of the property. We have seen this before. Now, of course, the town does not have the authority to widen NC sixteen on its own, nor do we have the authority to build a school. But what is in our control is whether or not we approve this project. I submit that approval of this conditional rezoning request will be detrimental to our community in that one. It will degrade the quality of life for our citizens who commute, drive their children to and from school and transact business in Waxaw. It will lead to further crowding of our classrooms, which will have a negative impact on Waxaw's children's education and make it more difficult to retain quality teachers. It will ultimately lower property values as people will begin reconsidering whether or not they would live in Waxaw due to the issues I just mentioned. I will, it will also negatively impact our downtown businesses as people will not want to navigate the traffic nightmare this project will bring. You see, there is a point of diminishing returns and I believe we are on the precipice of Waxaw losing the appeal it has enjoyed. I cannot support this project. Waxaw citizens have to come first.
It's really sad that we're in such a poor negotiating position on this piece of land that the by right and the conditional are so similar in terms of density because of the rezoning that was done in two thousand twenty-one.
One thing that should be made clear too, and something we should all consider is that the students at this location will go to Parkwood. We know that based on where other residents in the region have gone. And this particular development is south of where sixteen widening will occur. It's south of where anyone would put any parkway bypass. So all of those students on all of those buses will be going through downtown.
And the yields in the past, when we've done, you know, R4s or R3s, they've always yielded less than what, you know, we say that it does, right? So an R4 or an R3 usually yields at two point two. So is that not the case here?
Just with the total number of multifamily, the overall density goes up pretty quickly. If it was strictly all R4, it would probably be similar because TC allows greater density with apartments and multifamily. Um, R4 is specific to lot size, lot widths, lot depths. And so that's where you kind of get that lower density. It's five units per acre, but when they actually build it, it's, it's less.
Do we know how many acres are consumed by the creek and the creek setback requirements? So when we talk about, you know, they're giving us more open space, how much of that open space is actually usable open space and not creek and creek setback requirements?
Right. Do you know that number off the top of your head? Sorry, this is Mark Kime. Uh, he's a landscape architect, uh, with the applicant.
Uh, I don't have a specific number on the, the buffered creek acreage. Um, I assume it's fairly similar to, let me have to slide it. This area that we have for the tree save is around eleven acres, but obviously that goes outside of that acreage. I would venture, yes, it's probably five to six acres total that is in the buffered area. Some of the buffered area on the northwest side actually falls on the adjacent property. But within those buffers, you can still locate trails. So it's still usable as recreation space.
And there's, there's no real trees or foliage between the structures?
Um, in the proposed condition?
What I'm looking at here, are there any trees inside and in between any buildings?
Yes, we're, uh, we haven't done a full landscape plan, but this will be landscaped with the amount of trees we're proposing for mitigation. A lot of that's going to be located on lots in between structures. Uh, we're going to use, utilize fill slopes, uh, to repopulate trees where we've cleared on the edges. I think we've agreed that two to one, as long as it's on a lot, we can repopulate with the help of the urban forester, um, our progressive Mark Schuzy and, um, and town staff. But I think our current proposed mitigation for trees is five sixty-eight and that, that's above and beyond what is already required planting. So it should be a significant amount of vegetation that's been back in the plan.
Yep. And in, in addition to that, each lot, uh, single family detached and attached is required to have three lot trees. So, uh, what we're seeing often is that for the townhome products, a lot of the, the lot is so small that you can't fit three trees. So then we allow a lot of those trees to be planted elsewhere as well to help fill in some of that vegetation. Anything else?
I mean, I just, I want to kind of address Commissioner Ridger and, and I agree with you one hundred percent. I mean, I don't want all these houses in Waxaw either. I, I don't. But I sit there and I look at what they have the right to do and my goal was to try to at least lower what was allowed by right. Um, in this conditional plan, you know, that, that to me is, is smarter than having more, even more homes. So I guess, how do you see, just speaking with you, how do you see the difference there?
Well, I just see that it's, it's a difference of maybe forty or fifty units. And in the scheme of this disaster, you know, what difference does it make? And, and quite frankly, the pre-zone should have never happened, but here we are. So we have to deal with this. But I don't know why anyone would ever do that in that area. An R4 where there is no parkway, the traffic is a disaster. Kids are going to be on buses. They're on buses to Parkwood now for an hour. And my concern is their safety. I'm in the schools, thirty-eight kids per classroom minimum. It will affect their education level. It will affect people moving here because when I moved, I looked at the schools and I didn't look at their ratings. I looked at their classroom size because that makes a big difference. And so teachers are not going to be able to get to all those children. And it's great for the kids whose parents can afford tutors, but not everybody could do that. And so it's always those same kids that fall through the cracks in a room of thirty-eight. I don't care how good these teachers are. They're amazing, but they can, they are spread thin and we are losing them fast. And we can't control that, but we can control how we add to it. And it just, at this time.
But this is where we are right now.
Right.
And, and as you can't look back and say, oh, I wish we didn't do this at R4, but this is where we are. And so now we have to make the best choice of where we're at right now.
I don't think we should put a whole lot of stock in that by right plan though either. I mean, if they could have done that profitably, I think they probably would have rather than go through all this hassle. So, um, I wouldn't make the decision based on this by right plan that Madison mentioned.
We don't really, I haven't seen that plan.
That, that's what it boils down to me is we haven't seen a by right plan. We're, we're told, okay, according to the math and according to all the theory and the spreadsheets, you, you can do this. But does it come with other sort of mitigating circumstances that sort of makes it not profitable? And that's why they need this new zoning? Because, I mean, the one thing that I noticed right away when I looked at this is that this rezone basically moves the TC out of the creek, which is about three or four acres of unusable land in the creek. And it gives them an additional five acres in nice, flat, easy to work with land. So the five and the three, that's at least eight more acres that they're getting of good, flat, usable TC. So that's one of the reasons they want this rezoning. But if they had the ability to do eight fifty and they didn't have to come before us and listen to our crap, probably would have done that already. So it just feels like the eight fifty is this sort of threat, but it just, I, I question it, that's all. Because I haven't seen the eight fifty and I agree with what you're saying. I wish we could get less. I wish we could put less. And I am just as worried as you are about, yeah, by right, they can, they can really hammer this and, and get eight fifty or whatever. But I haven't seen the eight fifty plan. There's no proof that an eight fifty or an eight hundred unit plan is profitable. So we don't know if they would even do it. One plan I was shown in, included parking garages. And just to get all the parking spots you would need in that small piece of land. And we all know those are very cost prohibitive. So how realistic is this other plan?
And Commissioner West, like you made an excellent point with, uh, I think it was at the last meeting about the commercial and Prescott and how the, when you approved it, it was supposed to be a certain way and then it never came. And so I just feel like the commercial is so important, but I, I'm not confident it will come because everything will be more expensive ten years from now. And what's to say that they just say, oh, it's really, the market doesn't call for it now? So there go, so the traffic mitigations you would get with that and there goes your commercial and now our cost to serve is through the roof.
Can we, um, discuss the, the tree mitigation? That's something that, I mean, we just briefly touched on that, but so I know there's a lot of that is, is farmland, but how much, um, actual acreage is, okay, that's a good visual.
I would say at, at, at least three fourths of the property is, is currently wooded. And so one of the reasons you're seeing that tree mitigation as a condition is because that's a deviation from our ordinance. So that's why we propose the condition of, of the eleven acres of mitigation in coordination with us and the Union County Urban Forester.
So basically that all of those trees are going to be gone and then they're going to replant.
Correct. So trees along the creek would be saved though, right?
Correct. Yeah. So pretty much the, the banks, um, on the back of those lots, uh, they will be replanted along that area and along, uh, the outskirts of the stream area. Um, and then along with the street trees, lot trees, um, and then additional buffer plantings.
Are we ready for a vote?
Hey, Madison, just, uh, just a clarification. My understanding is that, um, the apartment buildings are considered a commercial tax base. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. And Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong with this. Uh, our current Ardmore, formerly Ardmore, now the Waxall Mills apartment complex is our highest tax generating commercial property.
Yes, that's correct and it's really not even close. They, uh, are our top revenue generator, uh, three times as much as number two, which is the Lowe's.
Yeah, there's no point in talking about revenue though unless we know the cost to serve. I mean, that would be like running a business and just looking at your revenues and not looking at your expenses, right?
Hopefully we'll have that ready for future projects in the next, hopefully thirty days, sixty days.
So I'm, I'm back to the tree mitigation. So I know that, um, hmm, how is it written that we have to, how is the, um, how's the ordinance written as far as the tree save and the mitigation part of it?
Yeah. So, um, so to be specific, the TC portion, uh, there's no tree save requirements. It really comes down from the R4 section of our zoning district. So when there is a property that comes in, let's say it's all R4, forty percent of it is covered in trees, so the canopy, um, they are required to save thirty percent of that existing tree canopy. So that's, um, not grading, not touching, um, preserved completely. So our mitigation, our ordinance isn't very clear on the mitigation planting. It just states that it has to be reestablished or replanted. And so we're using, um, about thirty-six trees per acre to be replanted back. And so that's eleven acres replanting times thirty-six. And I think you guys are going above that anyways too. Because they have to, at the end of the day, they have to market the product. And if it's just bare land and not presentable, you know, it's not as marketable, uh, to future residents. And so I, I will say, um, because we just, I just did this with the downtown park, we're getting a lot more strict on the tree planting. We're ensuring that they're planted properly. We're going out and inspecting every single tree to ensure that their, the root layer is at, at grade or slightly below grade. tree to ensure that their, the root layer is at, at grade or slightly below grade, um, making sure that it's not over mulch, making sure that, um, we have a new planting specification to where they're just not replanting trees with ninety percent clay and ten percent organic matter. We're going in and checking and making sure that everything is planted properly.
So really, the only trees that are staying that are there right now is along the creekway? Pretty much, well. But that's gonna be the same case if it's, if it's buy right R four too?
So for buy right, they would be, there wouldn't be a condition for mitigation, they would have to save thirty percent, period.
The town's tree mitigations work, I mean, it does take time for it to work, I mean, case in point is, uh, Millbridge, the north side of Millbridge is, is actually quite, quite shaded now from street trees and other tree mitigations. The remainder of it, we'll get there in five, seven, eight more years.
Are we ready for a motion?
Can I get a motion to approve the conditional rezoning CD zero zero two, two zero two three for Emerson Park as presented?
Or do we want the modifications?
Do we want the modifications?
Well, I can, but if you want me to just jump to number two, I can jump to number two. I'm making a motion.
Those conditions will be put into the record regardless on whether they're read out or not.
That would be the part with modifications.
Do we need to take a break?
Can I get a motion to approve condi- Do we need to adjourn for a short recess? Can I get a motion to adjourn to a short recess?
Someone, oh, for a short recess?
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now under short recess, thank you. Motion to return from recess. All in favor?
Aye.
We are back from recess. So, where we left off?
Like to make a motion to deny conditional rezoning CD zero zero two, twenty twenty three for Emerson Park.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All opposed?
Well, I was gonna ask for another.
Well, you have to vote on this motion first.
Okay, so...
This is a motion to deny. Option three in the agenda.
No. She said no.
So, we're gonna have to do this one at a time. Commissioner Don, yea or nay on condit-, on denial of conditional zoning CD zero zero two, twenty twenty three for the Emerson Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Redra?
Aye.
No.
No.
Nay.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve conditional rezoning CD zero zero two, twenty twenty three for Emerson Park with modifications?
With the proposed conditions? Um, and amending condition, are you amending it? Well, I, we were gonna, I was gonna ask for another condition.
Well, you're gonna, amending condition number six to remove, uh, it says a tenant space shall not exceed twenty thousand square feet, so that is going to be removed to be open...
No, wait, it's not gonna be removed, that's remaining.
Yeah, for clarification, number six is just to limit the square footage of a single tenant space.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so to prevent, like, a big box of...
So is number seven being removed?
No, uh, I was just gonna add, ask if we can.
We're adding number eight. Tracy wants eight.
Yes.
Oh, you want eight?
I would like to ask, in where the applicant agreed to the open space, that that could also be replanted.
So just for clarification, the reduction of the apartment building to be open space instead of office space, you want that open space to be replanted in trees?
Yes, because what's, what I'm having issues with are the amount of trees being cut down.
So can that be replanted and also replanted at the same rate as the other open space? And, um, with tree save, if there's the possibility of tree save as necessary?
Yeah, well, uh, that will be added as condition number eight, that the extra open space from the reduction of the apartment building be replanted at the same rate as the current tree mitigation planting. Period.
Oh, wait, wait, there's a motion on the floor, right?
How do I remove a motion from the floor?
No, this is the same motion.
Well, I'm asking if I can remove the motion from the floor, because we're having too much discussion in regards to the motion, and we need clarity. How do I remove a motion that's been presented?
It's the motions on the floor, you have to vote on the motions on the floor.
You have to act on that motion first, and then if you want to amend that, amend that motion.
Did we get a second on that motion?
Well, the motion now is adding an item number eight to the motion.
Has that been clearly cited in the minutes?
Hmm.
We're adding in line item eight to the motions to approve the conditions.
So what we're hearing is a motion was made to, um, approve
With conditions.
The conditions, with the conditions and adding a number eight
Right.
For the open space to be replanted with trees. That's what we're hearing as the motion. So now you'll need to act on that motion, and then if you choose to amend that motion, then you'll need to make a motion to amend that.
It's also important that the, uh, that the applicant has agreed to those, that's imperative to the process, yes.
Very well. All in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Me too, thank you.
And then a motion on the consistency statement?
I didn't see that here. Can I get a motion to approve the consistency statement as written?
Do we have to read that? Well, can we?
You can just point out the paragraph instead of being put in the papers.
So, a motion to approve the consistency stated as presented. Is that sufficient? That's sufficient.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Statement?
Yeah, first of all, to the board commissioners, thank you for your vote. Young man, you rock. It's awesome, it's awesome to be able to do that. I really would like to, one of the things that you guys don't know is, I've lived in Union County for better, you can tell me thirty years, it's over twenty-five years. Through this whole process, this really is directed at the people in Waxall, everybody is very, very respectful. Nobody's ever yelled at me, always had disagreements, always talked about it, and I call that the Union County way. I've lived here long enough to know what it is, so really I'm saying to the residents of Waxall, thank you for how you treat me. Have a great...
You're welcome. I'll just add to that, and even though this vote didn't go the way I would have preferred, I still appreciate the fact that you were able to make concessions and give what you could to the town, so we do appreciate and recognize that, thank you. Next up, we have a text amendment. Ms. Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Lisa Thompson, I'm the planning director for the Town of Waxall. I'm here tonight to present a text amendment. Uh, this is petition TA fourteen, twenty twenty-four, it's a request by the town to amend the land development code, it's chapters one and five, establishing requirements for the reservation of lands for schools, public facilities, and rights of way. If you can remember, this was a request, um, from the board at the retreat to have a, uh, plan and work with the, uh, Union County Schools. Um, we have met with staff, uh, Union County school staff several times, um, they do not have a school site identified at this time, however, once identified, we would update our future land use plan map to include that school site, and then this text would be the catalyst to reserve that site for schools. In addition, planning staff is also adding text for future public facilities, that would include police and fire, um, as well as, um, reiterating some bright of way requirements. Again, section one point one one, this is already in our, uh, land development code, we are adding the language in bold. And then adding five point four, general subdivision criteria, this is a bullet point summary of the text that's within your packet. Planning Board considered that text on April sixteenth and unanimously recommended approval, and then we held a public hearing May fourteenth, and no one signed up to speak. So with that, we're looking for a motion to approve, along with the reasonableness and consistency statement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Can I get a motion to approve? Oh, you do have a question?
No, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, table this item until June twenty-fifth.
I got a motion to table this item, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? All right. This motion is now tabled till June twenty-fifth, you said? Okay. New business. Ms. Janet again.
Okay, so we have a couple of facade improvement grant requests this evening. Uh, the first one is a request by property owner John Byram for the front side and rear facades of his property located at four Uh, the first one is a request by property owner John Byram for the front side and rear facades of his property located at four hundred West North Main Street. Uh, the home was built in eighteen ninety by Hugh Wilson Broom. Uh, this two-story frame queen ancile house is a contributing structure to the Waxahau National Historic District. The proposed work uh, includes repairs to the trim and the railings, prepping and painting the entire structure, reglazing the windows, and staining and varnishing the front doors. Uh, the applicant had submitted two contractor quotes, uh, one at fourteen thousand five hundred, the other at sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, the facade grant funds will come out of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, uh, so these sixty-five thousand dollars in the budget would be reduced by eight thousand dollars if this is approved as presented. Uh, leaving fifty-seven thousand dollar balance. The Historic Preservation Commission considered the grant request at their May thirteenth meeting and unanimously recommended approval. Uh, this evening I'm asking for a motion to approve the facade grant as presented for up to fifty percent of the actual cost of the work, not to exceed eight thousand dollars, um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is here as well.
Any questions from the board? Can I get a motion to approve FIP zero zero three twenty twenty-four?
Motion to approve FIP zero zero three twenty twenty-four as presented, up to fifty percent of the actual cost of work not to exceed eight thousand dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, moved, thank you.
Thank you.
And again.
Okay, so the next one is a request by property owners Jessica and Richard Gramlevitz for the front side and rear facades of their property located at five oh eight King Street. The house was built in eighteen eighty-five by Ralph J. Belk of the, uh, Belk Department Stores. The two-story house is a contributing structure to the Waxahau National Historic District. The proposed work, uh, includes replacement of damaged siding, rebuilding hall space doors, rebuilding windows, and repairing the front porch floor, and then prepping and painting the exterior of the home. The applicant has submitted ca- two contractor quotes, the first at fifteen thousand ten dollars, the second at fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, reduction of, if approved as presented, will reduce our fund by seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, leaving a balance of just under fifty thousand dollars. The Historic Preservation Commission considered the grant request at their May thirteenth meeting and unanimously recommended approval. And this evening I am asking for a motion to approve the grant request as presented, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well if you have questions.
Any questions from the board? Can I get a motion to approve FIP zero zero three twenty twenty-four?
Motion to approve FIP zero zero three twenty twenty-four as presented, up to fifty percent of the actual cost of work not to exceed seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Chief Dex Wilson.
Good evening. Uh, we applied for a grant last year about this time, it's the COPS Hiring Program Grant, uh, it's community oriented policing, uh, systems. Uh, tonight we are asking to reapply for this grant, uh, and I have a presentation. So, the total amount available this year is one million, or one, one hundred fifty-six million, uh, six hundred thousand available for funding. It is administered by COPS and it supports the community policing, uh, by providing new police officers to, uh, agencies across America. Waxahau's application would be, uh, including entry level salaries and benefits. There'd be two sworn, uh, officers who we'd be asking for. Max reimbursement through this grant is a hundred twenty-five thousand per officer for a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that is paid over a three-year period. A local match would be two hundred one thousand four hundred and ten dollars, and that would cover those officer salaries over that, uh, three-year period. Uh, we'd have five years to fulfill this grant, uh, if we received the grant from, uh, from the federal, uh, government. Funds available by reimbursement, so we would need to so we would need to budget the whole amount and then be reimbursed the two hundred and fifty thousand, which would save us about fifty-five percent. Uh, salary inclu- increases are not included, must be budgeted separately, so over that three-year period, any cost of living, uh, or merit increases would have to be budgeted in additional to what the two hundred one thousand would be. Uh, new positions must be carried forward for a minimum of twelve months after the grant expires. So, after the three-year period, we would have to maintain those two positions for another year, another twelve months. Uh, the timeline, uh, resolution support, we would need that today. A submission of deadlines, so to submit that grant, it would have to be done by June twelfth, uh, twenty twenty-four. We would know by October first whether we receive the grant or not, and that would be budgeted for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Request is, uh, to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four zero one two endorsing the Town of Waxahau's application for the COPS Hiring Program Grant for two hundred and fifty thousand, including the local match of two hundred one thousand four hundred and ten dollars. Do you have any questions?
Just a quick question for my own interest, uh, when it's reimbursed, is it at the end of each year or at the end of the three-year term?
It's, it's at the, uh, end of each year. So, uh, you would have to go through the first year and then be reimbursed and then same thing each time.
Any other questions from the board? Alrighty. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four zero one two?
Motion to approve resolution two zero two four zero one two endorsing the Town of Waxahau's application for the COPS Hiring Program Grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, including a local match of two hundred one thousand four hundred and ten dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it. Good luck. Next up, we have leadership reports. Jeff, what do you got?
Mayor, I do not have anything this evening, thank you. I thought we'd be here a little while longer.
Alright then, can I get a motion to a- oh, wait, no, you're. Matt?
Just a few housekeeping items, um, we did install the new four-way stops at, uh, West North Main and at Caldwell and, and South Church Street. So, they're in place and, and I think just, just with the doctor ordered there for, for safety reasons. We did have a meeting with Duke Power, they came into town to, uh, make us aware of some upgrades they're gonna be doing this summer. Uh, they'll be doing work of replacing, um, some of their conduit and it's, it's all aerial, some of their transformers and, and poles will be replaced from, uh, Waxahau Elementary School around, um, Old Providence, going to seventy-five and then ending right at the Pet Bridge on the south side of, of East South Main. Uh, that project is expected to take about three months and there will be intermittent lane closures throughout that, uh, that time period, so there will be a little bit of, uh, of growing pains as they do that work. Similarly, uh, NC DOT is, is gonna be paving NC seventy-five from, uh, the South Carolina Line all the way through town, uh, just to Old Providence Road, I'm sorry, uh, Old Waxahau Monroe Road. Uh, that's going to be all night work, so it will not conflict with, with our, um, our, our peak hours and, and will not conflict with the Duke Power project either.
And when's that due to start?
Well, the contract is, is available for the contractor through November, but they, DOT is telling us that it's gonna happen probably by July.
Of this year?
This year, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then finally, um, DOT has, has, uh, made a decision, and when, when we talk about, um, flashing light intersections, either red flashing or yellow flashing, in the event of a power outage, all flashing lights will now flash red. So, it becomes essentially a four-way stop. Uh, this is, uh, gonna take place, it's gonna take a while for them to actually make the conversion. I think there are about seven thousand locations in the state that will do this. It is a, a safety enhancement, uh, because the people in yellow don't necessarily know when they're gonna, gonna be able, so they take chances. And so, if everybody's at a red, then they, they will go back to, uh, you know, one, one per, one person per, per stop. And, and I, I think that's a great, great thing. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Matt. Next up, Chief Dex Wilson again.
Good evening again. I want to cover some of our crime stats we've had, uh, so far this year. Uh, January to present, uh, rape and robbery are down one hundred percent. Violent assaults are up one hundred and fifty percent. Over the past, uh, thirty days, just May alone, we had four violent assaults. Uh, three of those were involved with one incident where, uh, somebody mixed alcohol with the medication they shouldn't have and started shooting up their own home. Unfortunately, those bullets went through their home and to other homes around them. Uh, luckily, nobody was hurt, so, uh, that's, that's the only plus for that. Uh, lawsuits are up from automobiles, twenty-four percent so far this year. So, uh, keeping doors locked and, uh, and B, keeping non-valuables or valuables in, in your house and not in your car, would go a long way. Property crimes are up twelve percent. Overall criminal activity is down six percent so far this year. And, uh, we're approaching June, so that's good. Uh, narcotics investigations, homeland security investigations, where our officers have assisted them, they've seized ten kilos of meth, thirteen kilos of cocaine, four kilos of fentanyl, fourteen thousand three hundred in cash. Uh, warrants for five counts of trafficking meth, one count of felony maintaining a vehicle. Uh, here in town, they've seized, uh, four grams of marijuana, thirteen dosage units of mushrooms, two hundred thirty-six grams of fentanyl pills. Uh, possession of, uh, paraphernalia two different times, concealed carry or concealed weapons, one, one charge there, driver license revoked times two, and they've ce- seized forty thousand in, uh, US currency. Uh, ABC, narcotics ABC, the ABC, uh, inspections that have been done are five different inspections here in town. They've issued six permits, that's to Middle James, Abena, Veggie's, Fox's Pizza, and then a one-time permit to Mary O'Neil's and Waxahau Tap House. Uh, they've put on three classes for, uh, for those, uh, uh, permit holders, and they've issued two warnings for different violations. Uh, criminal investigations. Right now we have thirty-nine active cases. We've closed, cleared by arrest forty of those, or forty, forty cases. Uh, closed investigation, only six, six cases. Uh, leads exhausted thirty-seven, and then unfounded, they've had three cases. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mmm, board of commissioners, any comments? Can I get a motion to adjourn then?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.